Yep, here's the gavel. Good evening, everyone. October 20th, 2022, the Pittsburgh Planning Board. And on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for a site plan review from the Pittsburgh School Department for the new Crocker Elementary School at 200 Bigelow Road. Other business will have also a presentation afterwards from the Pittsburgh Public Library. First and foremost, we'll open the hearing for the new Crocker Elementary School. And who would like to present?
Well, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is John Bates. I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. We're the OPM with the Crocker Elementary School project. Presume you can all hear me okay. I'll just give a very quick intro. Thank you to the board for including us on your agenda tonight. We were very, we were able to have a preliminary discussion with the Chair and the Vice Chair back in August. We had a good discussion and some good feedback, but of course, the intent was always to present to the board as a whole, as we're doing this evening. The Crocker project is being done in collaboration with the Mass School Building Authority, and the state requires a very rigorous design process. It involves extensive collaboration with the school district, as well as local authorities. And now, having gone through that process, we're coming to you this evening with the design that we intend to bring out to the market to procure the services of a contractor by the end of this year. And with the rate of construction inflation that we've been seeing in 2022, we believe that timing is of the essence. But I'd now like to introduce to you folks Ed Borger, Principal at Saum Architecture. His team's been working very diligently to produce bid-ready documents for construction. They have a brief presentation for you, so without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Ed.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I've met a couple of you in the past. Just to John's point, this has been a long process. We've been designing for about two years now, and we've been doing it in close collaboration with Colliers and the district, and especially the building committee. And we've worked hand-in-hand in selection of systems for the building, everything right through to materials and the look of the building. So it's been a long process that's kind of culminating now as we get through the construction document phase. And also, as John said, we've been doing it at the same time very closely with the MSBA and their requirements and their reviews and their feedback, which has been incorporated into these documents. So I think maybe some of you have seen the design over the last two years. There's been a lot of presentations at city councils, the school committee meetings, the building committee and so forth. But for those who haven't, I'm going to give a brief kind of design overview. And also, I have other team members here. I have Ty Johnson from Warner Larson, who is the site designer, Nicholas Box from Niche Engineering, who's the site civil engineer. And I also asked the mechanical engineers from IMAG to be part of this because I know at the last preliminary meeting, there was a bit of discussion about the systems that were selected for the building. But before we get into that and before I start, I also want to remind everyone of the challenge we've had. Every project has the challenge of keeping within the budget, but I think this one was particularly difficult because of the timing, because of the pandemic, because of the supply chain issues. We were always trying to catch up to where costs and pricing was going. So we've always had to make hard decisions. We always did it as a team. And when I say that, I mean with the city and with Colliers and with the school district. So, you know, what you see here is the end results, to some degree, of all of these discussions. So with all of that, I'd like to share my screen. And let's see. And let me know if you see that.
Yep.
Awesome.
Okay. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to go to presentation. Okay. So again, I'm going to give a brief overview of the building design, and then I'm going to ask Ty to move into the site design. And we can get a little more technical with the site civil with Nicholas. And of course, then we can open it up to questions and go from there. So for those of you who are not familiar, the existing Crocker School currently is outlined by this sort of gray shaded area here. There is a primary drive that comes up. There's a limited amount of parking. There's a drop-off half circle here. And what's really unique about this project is the siting and the characteristics of the site, so that if you haven't been there, there's a, we'll call it a sort of a high plateau to the west. In the middle, it drops down to a lower plateau, and then the lowest plateau is over to the east. And for cost reasons, we all decided that it would be best to sort of pick the central plateau and try to limit the amount of earth that we're going to be moving around at the site and try to keep sort of a base at this elevation. So the new building is being proposed to be behind the existing building. It's being proposed to be on that central plateau, that particular elevation. This is the site plan, and I'm going to let Ty get into the details of it, but I will hit a few points, some basic points. We are adding parking, a significant amount of parking, as we're expanding the areas that are currently for parking, as well as adding sort of a staff parking area over here. We do have an emergency drive around the back, in the backside of the building. This was coordinated with the emergency responders in Pittsburgh. And one nice aspect of this building, as I said, you come in at the central plateau, but because there is the higher plateau to the west, when you're on the second floor, we do have grade access out of the building. So that's the one bonus that we get with this complicated site. So moving into the floor plans, and I'll give you sort of a high-level walkthrough. You know, we can always talk a bit more as we move forward, but the entrance of where the both the existing and the new parking will be is straightforward. There's a secure vestibule where people can check in. Then there's another vestibule holding area where people can wait. There's admin in this yellow. There's the nurses' area in sort of the darker yellow-orange. As we go around, there are some academic spaces. But I think what's particularly important at this level is the fact that there's the gymnasium at the front of the building, and there's the cafeteria with a stage and the music room, sort of centrally located. So the idea was always that this building is going to have a public function, so that it's not just for the students, but it's also going to be available to the city and to different events that may occur on weekends and at night and so forth. And the way the building was designed, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but basically, when there's an event in the gym, we can lock down these doors. And the bathrooms are available when there's an event in the cafeteria, on the stage. We can lock these doors, so nobody can get into the educational, the classrooms, and again, they can use the toilets. One thing that's important to mention is there is a clear separation between sort of these public spaces and the educational spaces, which tend to happen at the back of the building. So on the first floor, you have grades one and two. They're separated into small learning communities, and these learning communities not only have classrooms, but they have extended learning spaces where children can collaborate on projects and where kids in different classrooms can come out and share ideas and so forth. On the upper level, we have, it's sort of the same footprint up. You have grades three and four. And at the front of the building, over the admin, you have grade five. And they're a little more isolated. They're getting ready to go into middle school, so they have their, you know, they're sort of their own little realm over here. Also, on the second floor, we have what's called the media center, which is sort of a new term for what was the library, but it's a little more interactive with computers and presentation options and so forth. And again, from there and from the art room and from another classroom here, you can get right out to what is essentially an outdoor extended learning area. And from there, right out to the grade, right out to the grass. This gives you a little bit of an idea of how this footprint at the first floor sits at the site. So again, you can see the gym, just to orient yourself, and this is the cafeteria. There is a service entrance here. There is the bus loop, and again, Ty can tell you a bit more about that. And there is the emergency access behind. There are two playgrounds that'll be part of this project. But again, as part of the budget decision and as part of, if you want to use the word VE or just keeping things, you know, on track cost-wise, we did kind of limit the amount of development that we did at the site. So we have a full design for the site that can be implemented over time, but we're starting with sort of the MSBA basics and both safety, security, and for, you know, a necessary level of recreation. This is the second floor. And again, I think the most important thing to note here is, from the spaces that I previously spoke about, you can get out to this extended learning area where there'll be different activities on essentially a patio space. And from there, you can go right out to the grass, to the playground, and to this hardscape here where the children can play. And then there's a view of the roof. So talking with the district over the last two years, they were really interested in having a very contemporary look to the building, having a building of its time. So we've worked with some cladding that it doesn't show well in this image necessarily, but it's three different colors. I think this image is a bit perhaps washed out, but nonetheless, so it's going to have a bit of variety on there. It has a glass canopy, again, with different colors. And as you move into the building, you can see, this is the cafeteria. It has a retractable wall at the music room, so you not only have a stage, but you could have a second stage where there can be performances. You can see some of the colored glass that we're bringing in into a lot of these spaces. This is the media center, so it's a bit elevated. There's a ramp that comes up. You can again see the colored glass that brings colored light into the spaces. And this is not really a two-story space, but it adds some sort of vertical dynamics to the space. This is a typical classroom, you know, whiteboards, lots of views, lots of natural daylight. And this is one of the extended learning spaces where these are located between classrooms so that, again, children can come out and collaborate. And the intent is to bring different activities. So if someone's in science, someone's in art, they can come out and they can collaborate at different levels very quickly, and there would be supplies for making things and projects and so forth. So I think that's sort of a, for those who haven't seen this over the last couple of years, this is a brief overview. And I'd like to turn this over to Ty now. And Ty, you'll have to, I'll stop sharing, but I think this would be a good point for Ty to get in a little bit more into the detail of the site design.
Sure. Thanks, Ed. Appreciate that. Let me see if I can share my screen. My drawings aren't going to be quite as beautiful. They're not in color, unfortunately, but let me walk you through what I have and explain to you. Just want to hit a few main points, and then obviously, we can open it up to questions. Let me just start by saying that Ed made the point that the existing building is going to be constructed, is going to remain in place while the new building is being constructed. So that really set the stage of where this new building is going to go relative, vertically relative to the existing building. It's roughly 20 feet away from the existing, the back facade of the existing building. So the level of that is sort of, it is what it is. In other words, we're not manipulating it too much. It's pretty much sitting on that center plateau. And so the grading becomes, we do end up dealing with the grading in that manner because we need to have both facilities open at one time, essentially. So the, so generally speaking, we're reusing open lawn area and existing pavement to place the new building. There's really not a lot of additional tree clearing around the perimeter of the site. I think there's maybe one exception would be sort of toward the back, where you do need to have a fire lane access around the back. That was very important to have. And this fire lane access that does come around the back, you know, when you get to this point, you're actually at the, you know, a level, you know, roughly 12 feet lower than if you were standing up here at this existing playground, which explains why you don't have sort of a full loop. The fire department would pull up here, and then they would be able to back out this way for emergency. So this was always intended to be cleared of snow, kept open, and so forth. As far as the parking goes, Ed mentioned, we have, it's sort of an all-new configuration here, but it's, it looks similar to what is there today in the sense that we're keeping this pattern where you come up the entry drive in a one-way fashion, as you do today, and you would exit the same way. So that's, there's no change there. The new parking lot that Ed mentioned is roughly, I believe we have 61 spaces in this lower lot. I call it lower lot. It's about eight feet lower in elevation than the doorway. So you could see that we have a set of stairs here and a ramp, accessible ramp here. And so accessibility is an important, critical part of the design. And so you'll see many examples of how we, you know, accessibility is, even with the value engineering happening, you know, that's obviously like a bare minimum requirement. So in all cases, we have, you know, whether it's handicap spaces, egress, accessible, accessibility to various parts of the property, that's all included. But this teacher's lot is a one-way-in, one-way-out situation, so it's basically a double bay of parking, and then you would get to the end of it, and then you'd have to turn around with a three-point turn, if, you know, obviously park and then go out the other way. This is a barrier gate here that would be used by the fire department at the end of the parking lot. So we have, existing is roughly 64, 65 spaces on the property proposed. We have 129, so we've, basically, this lot is the difference, essentially. But we have reconfigured the other parking lots as well. And I just want to explain how the buses and cars would work in this situation. So the new entryway, you know, picture, the existing building is roughly here, so the new building is going to be behind it. So what we're doing is pulling in the bus loop to get closer to the front door. And so I've identified that as the blue line. That's the one-way bus loop, 20 feet wide, no server buses only, and gets you closest to the door. And then for cars, we've sort of set this up so you have a couple of different choices. They could either continue straight and get a little bit closer. That's where the handicap parking is. There's also a way of bypassing that and cutting over here, and you have a full drop-off here. Maybe the older kids would be dropped off here. It might be more convenient for parents. Maybe it's a quicker queue than to drive up into here. But all the vehicles would exit the same way down this direction, down Bigelow. And then for the teacher parking, they would exit, also, they would drive through this parking lot here, which is approximately where the existing parking is today. But it will be reconfigured, slightly regraded, new pavement, new curbing. So that'll serve as a way of getting out this way for the teachers that park in here. And then the service, the service area Ed also mentioned, that's on the, this is the southwest side of the building. And the way that would operate, it's a 20-foot-wide paved area, and that's designed for trucks to be able to back up. Now, a truck could come in this way, basically under this lower loop here, and then they would back up this way to get back into the service area. So that's how that would function. And we want to maintain like a very strong pedestrian campus. That's one of our goals here. You could see the sidewalks, curb ramps, connecting the front door to the drop-off areas. Also, this pedestrian path going up the hill here. This is a 5% gradient, which explains why it's looping around so long. It does have a stabilized lawn shoulder so that snow removal vehicles, like a, you know, pickup truck size, could drive up here and clear this walking loop off as well.
Hey, Ty?
Yeah, sure.
I just, we got, there's so many things. I don't want to get too far ahead of things and not be able to backtrack. Just one quick thing. You were talking about, if you scroll down, you were talking about where the teachers cross across that parking area to exit. I don't see on your plans any "do not enter" signs on the left there, so that no one takes a left turn there.
So there actually is. Maybe you have an older rendition, but this, really zoom in in here. There's a sign here and a sign here.
Okay. Good, good. All right, good. I just wanted to make sure.
Sure. Yep. Let's see if there's anything else I wanted to cover. We do have a full planting scope, which is nice, even though this project has been value engineered out. We do have substantial quantity of trees. We believe that...
What level of landscaping hasn't been engineered out?
Well, it's trees and lawn, basically, is what the design is. And I just want to note that we do have, you know, the way the parking is set up, we have these nice ample green areas between these parking zones that'll have trees. This one's going to have a wildflower mix and salvaged boulders as well as shade trees. And then over here, at this lot, we have several shade trees down here. This zone here is going to be like a major snow storage area, so we kept this relatively clear. We know that having, you know, tongues, landscape islands, is not really conducive to snow clearing. So by removing them and putting them off to the side, as well as sort of the green areas, we feel like that's a good solution and one that a lot of schools like to do. And then I just want to mention that we also have, and here is the tree plan, you can start seeing a little better. These symbols here represent the various trees. We have a mixed evergreens. There's, you know, there's a desire to have sort of a natural sort of habitat appearance by having native evergreen trees in addition to deciduous trees, so there's a mix there. And I just want to also add that there is a full site lighting package as well, and those are represented with these lights here. The electrical engineer we've been working with, you know, we're aware of the sort of the rural or sort of mountainside context, so we're just being mindful of the brightness. I believe one foot candle was the target, and that's what the electrical engineer has specified with the spacing of these lights. So once you get into the site, there is site lighting all throughout the parking and the walkways to the front door.
So just to be clear, the plantings you have, the trees you have there and the grass areas are all part of this?
Yes. So these, yep, exactly. Yep, so you can see there's several dozens of trees here in the package right now. As far as existing trees to remain, there were a few that we're keeping. These three right here, we're keeping. We are removing a few. You know, there weren't any really major substantial ones. I believe we're keeping this one, so this was a nice, a relatively nice tree here. So, yeah, but otherwise, as far as the, there's only, I think the tree in the back had to be removed for the building.
Thank you.
Before we move from the parking area, can you go through the drop-off for the students because of the two different parking lot scenarios?
Sure.
Because to me, it just, it just seems a little odd that there's two, like, car drop-off areas where they're crossing over the crosswalk and whether or not, you know, does that make sense that they would be swapped? I mean, you have a very lengthy drop-off area in the forefront versus it being closer to the school, because all those children will have to go through the second parking lot for which cars are going to be stopped there to drop the child off as well, like right there, like right on the crosswalk.
And just because we're on the topic, and I know Nick's on, but Commissioner Erickson sent just a little while ago a note, and I just want to read that one because it pertains to what Paula just said. He, there's a few here, I'm sure Nick will get to later, but just before you mention it, so you can hear both the comments at once. Nick had said, "The drop-off area is a little bit clunky also, especially with the parking areas in between the entrance-exit drive aisles. Which is the anticipated drop-off spot for students? What is the purpose of having two entrance-drive aisles separated by seven-foot median?" And then he put that, well, the image I'm looking at, you don't have it up, but it shows the seven-foot width of that median between your bus drive aisle and the entry drive aisle.
This piece here, I think, is probably what you're referring to.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's best practice to separate buses and cars, for sure. And due to the limited space here, we did a sort of a double loop where you have the buses closest to the school, the cars furthest. The buses are a more controlled environment. They come and go sort of with professional drivers. So we feel like this crossing here, you know, we could easily keep clear and safe. This would not be an issue for that. So that's why the buses are on the internal loop. For cars, having the double drop-off is, I don't know if you'd call it atypical, but what we, based on the space, we believe that having an option, essentially, vehicles are welcome to pull up into here, drop their children off. This serves as sort of a backup, if you will. So...
So that's, yeah. So that's where a seat almost needs to be reversed, because you have the entire sidewalk, you know, where you have the 29, you know, cars, I mean, parking area, where it's, parking's only on one side, and you have the whole length of the drop-off to drop off everyone, and then they would be funneled to the crosswalk. But at this point, they're all being funneled to the crosswalk where the primary drop-off is right on the crosswalk, for all those children getting dropped off on the first level to, you know, you're blocking the crosswalk. There's no place really, except for children to go through the parking lot to try to get to the crosswalk closer to the, you know, where the buses are to cross, continue crossing over. It seems pretty much reversed. You want the cars to kind of queue all in a long line to safely drop them off the walkway to go to the crosswalk over, right over to the entrance way. I don't understand how it works in this present configuration where you're kind of like more wanting, putting cars on top of that crosswalk on the upper portion to drop kids off, because they want to drop them right at the crosswalk. They're elementary school children, so they're, you know, six. They're not going to want to drop them off at the first one, and then there'll be a car blocking their path.
So Ty, I just, I'm kind of running a lot of the...
Just trying to think of it.
...pre-designed meetings through my head. And maybe this, maybe this could be solved with signage, because from what I recall, the lower loop was really the intended drop-off, where there's the large sidewalk that leads right to the crossing. And if I'm not mistaken, the interior or the middle sort of loop there, that's, wasn't that more for short-term parking and handicap parking? So if someone's visiting the school to pick up a sick kid or something along those lines, they would ultimately park there, but the intent is to really keep the car flow in the mornings or in the afternoon, sort of at the lower loop. And perhaps with signage, that, that's the way to achieve it. So am I on the right track? I thought that's what we had...
I believe you're right. I would also just add that, you know, this, and that being the case, having a raised crosswalk here might also make sense, just to keep this, you know...
But that shouldn't be a drop-off area right there. You can't drop off right at the, there's like no space... You can't drop off right at the, there's like no space on that aisle, except in the middle of the aisle and not on the crosswalk to try to drop someone off. It should not even be a drop-off parking lot spot. It's like you said, the, it's like that configuration should be reversed.
I mean, the bigger issue is, you, you know what's going to happen in real life. Cars are going to pull up in a line there, let the kids out in the parking lot, and they're, and, and, because only one car can fit in front of that drop-off where the, that, that crosswalk is. That's the only place they should be letting people out, but yet, if you do that, it doesn't become a practical drop-off area anyway.
I think the intent is that we, we want the cars to pull up along this edge as far as possible to keep the bus area open. And like Ed said, if prohibiting drop-off in this zone with signage might be a simple solution for that, to maximize use of this drop-off area.
If you did actually swap it, though, the configuration, you know, around, you know, put the major, the drop-off further up and the other parking further down, you'd also lengthen the queue.
Isn't a, isn't a problem with, with flipping it? Because I know we've talked about this in the past, is you're, then you're pulling all of the short-term and the handicap parking away from the building.
Why not just, why not just flip that, why not just flip that lower portion upside down, so, well, then the kids would have to cross. Yeah, I guess you can't do that, because then the kids would still have to cross in the same spot.
Well, there's.
I was going to say, make it one-way in. So you just have the, those spaces facing the bottom EV spaces, but I suppose it doesn't cause, that doesn't solve the, the dilemma either.
Can you swap the handicap spaces over, like, still keep the angled parking similarly? You keep that when you move it up, so you still have parking in that aisle.
What if you shifted the crosswalks further down the aisle? So you're not queuing.
Shifted to what side, Laura?
Shift them left.
Unless you have a sidewalk the whole width, though, you have the same problem. You only have one spot for drop-offs, because you can't have kids get out where, in the middle of a parking lot. It's just, we can't encourage that as, just, just as practice of approving a site plan. You can't really approve a site plan and say, oh, yeah, all the kids are going to get off all the way up and down that, that, that section.
Usually at the schools, there's, there's attendance that, and they, the first car in, the kids can pile out and then, and I'm suggesting, I'm just suggesting that at the left, if it's all sidewalk there, at least you have cars lining up. It's been a long time since I've dropped kids off. That's how it used to be.
Oh, I'm doing it, we're doing it currently, so it's a, it's a thing, for sure. The traffic control is, is a, is a major.
So Ty, I don't know if there's signage there in this, I can't tell in this plan, but I think prohibiting drop-offs up into the, I know you're showing that cars can go through there, but drop-off was never intended up there. I think, again, if you're handicapped, if you need to park close to the building and during the day, if you, if you have a brief visit, that's fine. But I think we need to prohibit clearly, you know, people going up there to drop their kids off. And it's one of those things with the first few days, it may be a, a bit of a challenge with the person out there kind of directing, but everyone's going to end up flowing to the lower, the lower loop, which works much better. There's the long sidewalk, and obviously it's meant to be the drop-off, so.
How many, how many cars can fit, how long is that, how long is that queuing length? How long is that sidewalk? Approximately, obviously.
It's roughly 100 feet, so five.
Yeah, see, see, isn't, I mean, isn't that a significant issue? I, I, I wouldn't want it to block all the buses coming either if you have, you know, 40 cars queuing there.
Yeah, I think definitely keeping this side open, this is a one-way in here, so we'll want to keep, maybe it's pavement markings, but keeping the vehicles coming up here on the left.
If you have the left-hand side marked cars and the right-hand side marked buses, you probably, probably, I probably would encourage some pavement markings there.
Right.
To keep them separated.
Striping in the road.
Yep.
So I just want to give, that was just that thought on the drop-off pieces, because it's, exactly, needs, needs some, I, I think some further thought for safety purposes. And yes, there will be some attendance, but now they're crossing two parking areas. So between that and where the buses get dropped off to save, to get to the entrance of the school versus one, so people are probably going to want to probably park and then walk their child over.
Yeah, and I think that could be managed with, you know, it could be cones, it could be, I know we've done this with, you know, gates, you know, that can open and close as well. Ed, I think there's, there's some options there.
Definitely needs signage. I think we should include that, sort of a base level.
Yeah, or pinpoint that for some type of standard operating procedure on, on the drop-off scenario configuration.
And, and I suppose the, I, I'm assuming that Commissioner Erickson's concern, that seven-foot is, is it substantial enough to separate traffic? Meaning presumably it's just raised granite, right?
Yes.
Vertical granite curb.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Paul, this is, this is Nick here, just to weigh in on that. I, I guess I didn't realize the separation between the buses and the cars, but what's laid out makes, makes perfect sense. So I, that was more of a question than a comment, so I think my question's been adequately answered here.
Thank you.
And I, I agree with the signage to clarify drop-off versus parking and, and all of that.
Yeah, you'll have to use sawhorses or, and cones and things of that nature till everybody get used, gets used to the correct pattern.
I think signage and pavement markings would go a long way.
Well, that will be helpful, too.
Yep.
Not a drop-off area.
Right, right.
Very designating the drop-off areas.
Yep.
So, so Ty, what else, what other areas have we not sort of tackled here?
I think we talked about most things. I did talk about emergency. We do have, we do plan to include, you can see this symbol represents boulders. We have some removable bollards and boulders for separation in addition to, you know, granite curb edge here, and a nice wide eight-foot sidewalk. That's what's set up in the front. Other than that, I think we hit on the main points I wanted to touch on.
Right next to the parking, there's Whittmore Street. Was there modifications to that? And is there the intersection right there?
Yeah, so it's a minor reconfiguration, just to remove some of that excess pavement. But we do want to keep a, you know, it's sidewalk pedestrian connection here, so we've just some curbing pavement and some walkways is how we're connecting to that. I know there was a request for signage potentially, for do not enter signs.
Yeah, Ty, I know we had talked, Paul and, when Paul and I met you guys a couple months ago, or whenever it was, that that's open now, but it was brought to my attention by, by more than one person and a couple counselors about how traffic isn't supposed to go down Whittmore, but yet it does. So there should be some do not enter signs there that should be just for emergency vehicles. I guess, I was told there used to be a gate there and that it was taken down at the request of, I think, fire, but either way, if, 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 if the intention is to keep everything on Bigelow, there should be signs there.
Sure.
Not a throughway or something, or, it depends what the.
Emergency vehicles only, or whatever.
They don't have to be dependent upon DPW coding and whatever petition is needed to put up a sign.
Yep.
And Ty, what do we have for signs? I do remember us talking about putting signs there. Do you recall what they say offhand?
As of right now, there, we're not, we don't have new signs shown right here.
So it sounds like we should, we should add some signage, right?
Yes.
Yep, that'd be great.
I guess school bus, school traffic should just exit and enter via Bigelow.
Yep, yep, so it splits here, and then there is a new identification sign here, right at the corner.
Oh, that's great.
But yeah, just generally speaking, this triangle of lawn is, is going to remain open with these trees, these three trees will stay. So that's really not part of the project. There's really nothing happening there.
So, so the whole entryway system on Bigelow, beyond where your limit of work is there, is obviously outside of the scope of this project, correct?
Correct, yep.
I only ask because I know our commissioner had some questions on the, the access.
All right. Does everybody have to finish their, some of those questions on the park, on the parking lot?
I have a question. The, in the teacher's lot, the handicap spot is pretty far away from the ramp that they would use if they had to park there?
Yeah, so the, I think for.
Oh, in the teacher's lot?
Handicap.
Oh, okay.
Right, so teachers would use this, because it's closer to the building. This, this space up at the top there that you caught.
Yeah.
Is for the, to use, essentially, if, if there was going to be the community activity in the back here, this is an open lawn area.
I see.
And playground is, well, the playground's going to be removed and left be put back later, but if, if there was going to be public community use, that was put there for that reason.
I see, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Does any board member have any further questions on the parking aspects?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
Someone has a hand raised.
There's a hand raised.
On the parking, but, so I guess if somebody from the design team could, could speak.
Pete has his hand up.
Oh, Pete.
Go ahead.
Got a question?
Mike, you can go, I just don't think he can hear you.
To how, how do you construct a building right behind, you know, very close to an existing building while that is in use, and with construction vehicles coming to and fro, and, you know, kids being dropped off, and, and how, how does that work, I guess?
Have you been to Doherty? Tim Whister?
I've been by Doherty, yes.
But that's a good question, like, how do you deal with the noise and everything else?
Yeah, so the building, as Ty said, is going to be roughly 20 feet behind the, the existing building. It's, it's going to be fenced off. There's going to be a construction access point that's sort of separate to the right there. And there will be, I mean, there will be some noise during the day, there's no doubt about that. I mean, it, it's a difficult situation, because this is the site, and the site has limitations. There's a building on the site, there's a drive up to the site, and then there's space behind it, and that, the, the grading and the land behind it is, you know, as I said at the beginning, it's fairly complex, so for cost reasons, we were limited to the point where we wanted to keep on that central space, and we couldn't go too far back because of the grading, because there would have been more and more digging and relocating earth and so forth. So, you know, we were kind of pinned in a little bit to, to the location, but, you know, we've, we've built buildings close to other buildings before, and it will be separate. We've talked to the building inspector about this, as well as the emergency officials in the town, so it will, it's, you know, it meets code and so forth. But there's going to have to be, in the spec, this language about hours of use. We're still kind of talking with the district about that. Obviously, there won't be trucks going in and out when there's, for instance, drop-off and pickup. There's going to be certain activities that are going to have to be limited as far as noise and so forth, but, you know, at the end of the day, this is, this is sort of the site. And there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of, also, just to add to that, there's been a lot of thought on the phasing, and of course, when the major demolition happens, that'll happen off on school breaks and so forth, so, you know.
I would agree with, with that, just, it's not uncommon to do school projects this way, where you're literally building.
John, can you speak up?
Oh, yeah, of course, sorry. This is better. I, I just wanted to agree with that, and that it's not uncommon for, to, to do school constructions this way, where you're literally building a new school right next to the existing one while it's, it's, while it's in, in session. So I, it's not, not ideal by any means, but certainly not uncommon.
Yep.
So I'll move on to another topic of the, like, safety and security, seeing as it's an elementary school, that you have design features built in that's been certainly vetted out through the various departments.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So we, we've had from day one a safety and security consultant onboard. They do many Massachusetts schools. They're called Good Harbor. And we've talked over the last couple of years with different departments, different parts of the school department, and I'm just going to share my screen again briefly, if I may. Let's see. So, and I'm going to go back, let's see, and I'm going to start right at the beginning. I'm going to start, computer's frozen here. Oh, my computer's frozen, but I can talk through this. So starting with what Ty was showing, so we have, you know, we limit where cars can go. When you get up closer to the school, we have boulders and bollards, so it's, we limit or prevent any kind of access for vehicles to get close to the school. Once you get close to the school, all of the windows that are accessible are what's called school guard glass. So the, the school guard glass is essentially, it's bullet resistant. We've also created different levels of entries. So you have the entrance vestibule, which is totally secure, and there's a transaction window. So somebody going into the school, whether it's a parent or an outside vendor, whomever, will be buzzed into that first set of doors. Once they're inside, they'll go to the transaction window, which again is school guard glass. They'll do their paperwork, get cleared. Then they go into the next vestibule, and ultimately, they'll go into a secure waiting area. That's the third level. And even if they're here in there to visit the, the admin, a principal, or someone from staff, they would go into the admin waiting room. So again, you, people don't just walk right into this building. There's certain levels where they get approved, they can be looked at and monitored. All of the classroom doors and the side lights are bullet resistant. Each of the doors and any windows at classroom have emergency blinds that you just unlatch it and they pull down, and they're black, so it prevents any visual connection into the rooms. Also, the doors through the security system can go into lockdown mode, they can be locked. There are duress buttons throughout the building. I'm trying to hit the high points here. There's, there's a lot. Any window that is at eye level is laminated with bullet-resistant glass. And also, all doors have monitors, so people know, like, if a door's open, that whoever is at the, the buzzer will go off, they'll know if it's an extra door, that the door is open. I'm trying to hit some, I'm trying to think of some of the other, sort of the basic features here. And I think just generally, the way it's laid out, like I said at the beginning, where if there's an event, you can lock down different sections of the building where people can't even go there. So people won't be roaming through the building to begin with. So those are some of the, the aspects. And again, you know, there's a lot more detail, there's cameras throughout this building. Every public area has, has a camera, every exterior aspect of this building has a camera. So, yeah, you know, that, I think that kind of paints a picture here of what we've been dealing with and talking about and implementing in this building.
Well, thank you for going over the.
I just had a quick question. I know we're talking a lot about the front of the building, but Crocker is located in a very rural area where there could be potential safety and security issues coming from out of the woods. So what has been, what certain measures have been taken for the rear of the building?
Yeah, it's very similar. So the, the back doors are always in lock mode. As I said just previously, if a door's open. just previously, if a door's open, there's a, there's, there's a monitor. So the school will know if a door is open. When it closes, it goes back into lock mode. Any glass that's at sort of eye level has this bullet resistant film. So, and again, there's cameras throughout. There's no, there's no blind spots at the back of the building. So although it, there is, there are the woods back there, there's also a fairly large zone of sort of grass around. So anybody, it gives the opportunity to see people as if anybody came out of the woods, there's quite a distance to get between the woods and the, and the school. So, you know, the, go ahead.
There's no planned, there's no perimeter fence?
There's no perimeter fencing. Yeah.
All right. Does anybody have any questions regarding the, those aspects that you just went over, safety and security?
No.
Okay. Of course, we'd like you to go into some of the, the building mechanics about the climate control that's planned and how it's to function?
Sure. So we have with us Kristin Esposito and John Brenton, who are with IMAG. They're the mechanical engineers. And I'll turn it over to the two of you to give sort of an overview of the system that, that's been implemented here.
Thanks, Ed. So the building is heated with several natural gas boilers. There's a hot water loop that does the primary heating. On the roof, there are gas-fired dedicated outside air units with energy recovery, and those are ventilating the building. So there's no full cooling system for the classrooms. There's a dedicated cooling for the admin area. But the outside air system provides partial cooling for the classrooms and also dehumidification. And then the other measure that's in the classrooms is ceiling fans. So we're able to maintain thermal comfort in the classrooms without providing full cooling. And again, we do a full...
Even on a 90-degree day?
Yeah, so we're, we're never going to get to 70 degrees in the classrooms on a 90-degree day. But we're within the ASHRAE 55 standards. And, you know, this was a decision that was made in the schematic design phase as a cost savings. Classrooms are high ventilation spaces due to the amount of people that are in them. So, you know, I would estimate that on a 90-degree day, we're probably going to get to around, you know, high 70s, maybe 80 degrees. So we're not going to be down in the low 70s where you would be with a, a system that has full cooling. But we're going to get pretty close. We're going to be dehumidifying the air. And we also have the ceiling fans to help with thermal comfort. You know, keep in mind that in an elementary school, there's not a lot of 90-degree days when classes are in session, obviously, because there's no school during the summer. So for the vast majority of the time where there's school and kids are in classroom, we're going to be able to maintain our desired set point. There are going to be days, you know, at the beginning of the school year in September and at the end of the school year in June, where we have hot days where we're not quite going to get to where you would want to be in a fully cooled building. But this system is significantly less expensive than what a fully cooled building would be. And I think we're, you know, fairly close. So this was a, a value that was provided to reduce costs, but, you know...
And I believe Ed sent over an estimate, I don't know if it was yours, two, two and a half million would be fully cooled, the whole building?
So John, John and I worked with the estimators to get sort of a schematic level budget. And we, they came up with two, about two and a half million, I believe it was, John.
Yeah, between two and two and a, two and a half million dollars, that's direct construction cost to, to equip the building with full air conditioning. There's further implications beyond just the direct construction costs at this point in the project. If we were to go ahead and change the mechanical design, that would essentially be putting a pause on the project. Ed and his team would, would require additional time to redesign the mechanical system. There would be an associated cost with that. So our estimate would be two and, two to two and a half, just direct construction costs. And it could be upwards of double when you factor in escalation when putting a pause on the project and then additional consultant fees. So it's a decision that's been talked about quite a bit in recent months, especially as this project's become a reality, as we've gotten closer to bid time. And having looked at the, the implications from a cost and timing standpoint, it remains, the decision remains from the district side to go forward as planned with the system that Mr. Brenton just, just described.
I guess it's our, is that our understanding, the understanding as well, that cooling cannot be retrofit if not designed now?
It can be retrofit. My recommendation, if that was done in the future, would be to put in a VRF system. The piping that connects the outdoor units to indoor units is small and could be added after the fact. The, the real challenge would be on the electrical side. Adding cooling to that many classrooms has a very large electrical load. And the service that's brought to the building at this point is not sized for that. So, so physically adding VRF system is definitely doable. You could put the condensing units at grade or figure out a way to put them on the roof so it doesn't impact structure too much. But yeah, the electrical is not adequate and we need to be, you'd either need to upsize the existing service or figure out a way to bring in a secondary service somehow to do that.
I guess that might be some other cost to figure, figure if it could be done in a phased approach. As, you know, moving forward, this building's supposed to be, our understanding, like 60 years or so for its lifespan. So we're talking about something, and also with climate change happening, to be versatile, where we're saying, well, right now, this is what the weather is and right now, we're not using the classrooms in the summer. Who knows, 20 years from now, it could be full-time use during the summer for classes as well with these extended heat waves that we're having. So to build, it's a huge investment, the city for a top-of-the-line building to ensure that we can use it, you know, year round comfortably would be, is of course ideal.
I know...
Understand that there's the value engineering pieces aspect to it, but looking to the foreseeable future to, to make it, you know, the current standing is newer buildings are being established. This seems to be like a basic standard.
We also have, we also are an interesting point in time. Climate change aside, I mean, obviously, I know Paul and I had mentioned this in the past and continue to mention it, that at least from a planning standpoint, that it's very short-sighted not to do whole building cooling. I, I know, I'll let our commissioner, DBW commissioner speak as well, but I know in a letter he had just sent today, the facilities manager, as well as the DBW commissioner, both suggested the building be entirely cooled. We are in a position where we have funds where we wouldn't otherwise potentially have with the, what I'm told are the second round of ARPA funds, which I don't know, but I'm assuming could cover the overage cost for, for this cooling issue. I mean, again, the, the conversation that, the, the two points that I've heard up till now in talking to people, one of them was, well, none of the other school buildings are cooled, or most of the other school buildings aren't cooled. And as Paula said, the, the, the issue with that, or I guess the response to that, is that we're building a building with an estimated life of 60 years. Over the next 60 years, we should anticipate, or we should at least plan for all of these school buildings to eventually have direct cooling. We're, we're basing this decision on two premises that might turn out to be false premises in the future. One are, one is the obvious, that the temperature's going to stay the way they are now, which obviously we know is not the case. Two, and more importantly, that we're assuming that the current school calendar will always be the school calendar. What if somewhere down the line, alternate calendars throughout the Commonwealth are proposed, where you're talking, you know, multiple school vacations throughout the year and, and going to school throughout the summer? The argument, you know, now would be, none of our schools can handle it. Well, we need to prepare for those kinds of possibilities. And at the very least, we would have a building that would be sized big enough where it could be another cooling center that we could use when we do have significant heat issues during the summer. So I think for the two and a half plus million that, that are involved in this, it's, it's, it's terribly short-sighted not to include it. And, and as, you know, a member involved in city planning, I don't think it's a good planning decision for the city. So, and, and on that note, I did spend a significant amount of time with public records requests with the MSBA about current cooling systems in, in, in current buildings. While they don't separate that information out, which I thought was somewhat comical, especially talking to several people, including the lead attorney, or one of the attorneys for MSBA, they had provided as much information as they could. I guess the problem is, the kind of the problem we dealt with in this is some go into initial planning with cooling and then get value engineered out, or some don't have that detail because some of the districts pay for it out of pocket versus MSBA. But we, they did point me to a study that they weren't able to provide. But from 2017, that, that's 69% of schools built prior to 2017, so not in the last five years, 69% had some sort of cooling. The four schools that were built in our area, in districts that I considered somewhat similar to Fitchburg, Briggs in Ash West, Athol Elementary, Gardner Elementary, which is just being finished now in Templeton, all were built since, I believe, that 2017 mark. According to their building departments or the MSBA documents, they all have direct cooling. So, you know, it's, again, it's, I understand where you guys are coming from, and I understand where the school department's coming from. I just think it's short-sighted in the city, you know, the city side to not say, we'll find that other two, two and a half million plus, obviously, like I said, with design costs and everything else. It's something we should do.
And if it, if it's, you know, can't be done at this time, it's still, how do we accommodate some of that cooling in the interim? Can you, is, can you put in or accommodate mini splits? Can they do independent AC units? Teachers, like, they will bring in certain components? It's like, is there an available outlet to even plug something in to another fan or something else by the window? And I'm seeing that the windows tilt out very high up, you won't be able to put anything in a window, but is there in another area where you can exhaust something or to help accommodate some of these classrooms?
Or just designing your, your retrofitting suggestions so we have the opportunity in the future to figure it out. I think that that's a poor alternative, but at least it's an alternative. I know when we talked to John and Ed, we were, Paul and I were told that retrofitting wasn't possible. So I am somewhat happy to hear that it might be. But we should at least plan that retrofitting possibility in the design stages. As a, as an absolute bare minimum.
Pete still has his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Peter, go ahead. You can, whenever you're ready, just unmute yourself. You're still muted. Still muted, Pete. Hold on, let me see if I can...
Mute.
See, there you go.
There you go.
I'm sorry, but this question that I have goes quite far back in the discussion. And I guess I wasn't noticed, but I was concerned about, oh, I'm obviously concerned about the air conditioning, but I was very concerned about snow removal of the project. Obviously, snow removal is going to be a massive job, especially because of all the walkways and parking lots and, and different areas that need to be cleared. Someone had mentioned the fact that some of the walkways were wide enough for a plow on a truck. Is this the case for all of the walkways around the building? Can they be serviced by, easily by a truck?
I could probably answer that, Ed. The, there's one walkway in particular we've accommodated for a wider truck, like an F-150 or something. Regular sidewalks around, around the school are usually five or six feet wide, which would need a different type of vehicle to remove snow from that. Probably wouldn't use a full-size truck. The one area that we did want the truck was so that a truck could get up to a larger hard surface play zone that would need to be cleared for students. And I just would add that we've spent a good amount of time thinking about and planning for snow storage on, on this property. And it worked with the district, the DPW, and so forth to accommodate that.
Yeah, snow storage is really not my, my, my issue or my concern. I, I understand we have plenty of space for snow storage. It's, it's the physical removal of the snow and the job involved that, you know, that bothers me a little bit. It's, it is, it is quite a, an overwhelming job, but you'll need special equipment to do it. Just one quick comment on the, the parking situation. I, I think the developers have worked very nicely to provide parking and drop-off areas and, and bus areas. I do want to say that I do pick up my grandkids at a fairly new school out of town. And it has all sorts of great bus, drop-off areas, parking areas for teachers, pickup areas for students, signage. It even has a police officer there or crossing guards. But even after all that, every day, it's pretty much chaos. And, and it's not, there's no way around it. People and parents pick up and drop off their students everywhere. And I can't even imagine that they'd go into those lots that are close to the building because they're going to be so full. They're going to use some of the remote lots. But again, that conversation is already passed and just a couple of my thoughts.
Peter, I'm sorry, that's my fault. Someone did say you had your hand up too. We got sidetracked. I apologize. If, if it happens again, you can speak up, you can just unmute yourself.
Oh, I didn't realize I could do that, Paul.
No problem.
It's for now.
All right, we have, and do we have any, it is a public hearing, so let it also open up to public comment?
So, so before we get to that point, and Nick, I don't know if you want me to read your letter, if you just want to talk about it, but Commissioner Erickson sent something today that I know the applicants haven't seen yet. I was just reading it as the meeting was going on. So Nick, I don't know if you want to go over that, or if you just want me to read it, it's up to you.
Paul, could you just post it on the screen and I'll kind of...
Yep, I can pull it up. Just bear with me for one second.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see here. 001.
While he's doing that, could you just generally outline the current size of Crocker Elementary, numbers of the students in occupied space, and what the new planned building is to occupy, size for?
Yeah, the current student population, I believe, is 525 students. And where the planned population is for 845 students. And from my understanding, when it, when school begins, there, there won't be the 845. I, I don't remember the exact number, less, but it's sort of a population that, you know, is planned out where the school will grow into it. So it's, it's not quite doubling, but it's, it's a significant increase.
Okay. And is there any type of, I know we talked about utilities, any type of LEED certification on the building?
Yes, this is going to be a LEED Silver building.
A LEED Silver?
Yes.
Good. It's good to hear.
It's, it's up, Nick, whenever you're ready.
All right, perfect. So first comment, I've been involved with this project for a little bit. I took over on the, the building committee for Nick Bosnato after he left the city. So just for the record, I understand the site constraints, cost considerations, et cetera. But I honestly think that the site needs more parking and more snow storage area. I understand earthwork's expensive and that's kind of the, the driving factor behind not having, you know, larger areas for both of these items. But I just want to be on the record as having said that. Same with the, the air conditioning. You know, this was discussed and brought up by the, the facility manager, most recently during the last school building committee meeting. But I, I agree with, with the point raised. I think the building would, would benefit from having full air conditioning. I think it would be short-sighted not to do it. You know, I, I don't know where the two and a half million's going to come from or, or plus. But that, I, I really think that should be something we, we take another hard look at before we, you know, decide to proceed on. Third bullet point, that's been taken care of. We discussed some additional signage there out in the front drop-off area. I understand the, the median separation for bus versus car drop-off, so no worries there. Moving down, so the, the concrete sidewalks, our, our city standard is to use concrete with the, the fiber reinforcing, or fiber reinforcement. So I'd like that to be added if, if possible. It's, it's usually a little bit more expensive, but not prohibitively so. And I, I think it just, it's, it's a belt and suspenders approach to, to using that and the wire mesh. And the wire mesh itself, the details should show the chairs and make sure that the specs carefully outline how the chairs should be installed and how the, the wire mesh should be installed. So it's, it's done properly. how the chairs should be installed and how the, the wire mesh should be installed, so it's, it's done properly. Pavement details should match city standard specs. Our standard's five and a half inches of pavement. That's going to impact the cost. So I understand if, if we can't do that, but if we can match the standards, that would be the best way to go. I heard some discussion about site lighting documents that I downloaded from the Dropbox that have the, the lighting plan, but it sounds like that's been taken into consideration, so no real worries there as long as it's, it's been thought about. On the water side, the detail shows tapping sleeve and valve for tie into the existing water system. The, the water department doesn't like that configuration. They'd rather a T cut into and mechanically attach to the existing line. Abandoned water services, if there are any, need to be kept in the main and witnessed by DPW water. Likewise, on the sewer side, abandoned sewer and drain services should be kept at the main, witnessed by DPW engineering. And I, I think I've gone through stormwater calculations for this project at some point, but it's, like it's been mentioned previously, the, the design process has been going on for a year plus. So I was just wondering if someone from the, the site design team could forward me those once again, just so I can take another final review through them and comment on that before it goes out to bid.
Nick, while we're on the subject of stormwater, it would be helpful just to put the plan back up on the, on the screen because we didn't really touch on that, but.
So, actually, yeah, so we have Nicholas Botts here from NCH Engineering. So Nick, maybe you share your screen and talk a little bit about stormwater, kind of walk us through.
Sure thing. Okay, everyone can see my screen, correct?
Right.
The stormwater, do you want me to kind of review the whole system, or do you want me to talk about the system as a whole? Meaning, go through the, the plans and the connections and, and display, or just kind of?
Just kind of highlights, I guess, and particularly the, any D basins, or particularly the underground recharge areas that you have?
Okay. So the stormwater drainage for the site does comply to all the mass stormwater standards, which does include the quality and quantity of stormwater that should be treated for the runoff around the building, as it will be directed to deep sump catch basins, where it ultimately will end up in this large subsurface detention system, which will have enough volumetric storage to ensure that the flow rates from the site are decreased from the existing condition, as well as mimicking the existing drainage patterns to ensure that we're not changing the existing wetlands configurations from a pre to post configuration. In fact, we've already received a negative determination for the RDA granted by the Fitchburg Conservation Commission, and the plans have also been reviewed and received comments, which we've already addressed, from DPW as well as the water and wastewater departments. I can illustrate, would you like me to talk more on potable connections or sanitary, which includes the construction of a 5,000 gallon grease trap connected to the new, new school sewage and kitchen waste?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions in or about the, the service of the new, the new connections to the site.
Nick, do you have any other questions without seeing the rest of the, you know, detailed plans?
Sure. Nick, Nick Botts, can you just refresh my memory? You guys conducted test pits in the infiltration area, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to make sure that that's been done. I, I'm sure I've talked to you about this before. I review so many of these infiltration systems through planning board, conservation. It's tough for me to keep track of which one I've commented on already. So I, I assume the designs, the designs focused around whatever soil you encountered. Do you happen to call if it was like C-type soils or D, or what was on site? Because I know we get a lot of water that comes off that hill. I just want to make sure that that's, that's definitely been addressed.
I believe the soil on site is C, but I can double check that and report back to the board.
You can just report back to DPW.
Sure, will do.
Yeah, Nick, if you could just send me the, the stormwater analysis documents so I can look through it again. I, I did a quick search earlier in my emails trying to find what you or someone else might have sent at one point over the past two years, but I, I couldn't find anything, so.
I have your response here, and I can, as you said, I can absolutely forward the stormwater plans and stormwater report in its entirety to you again, if you like.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just be cautious that you start unsharing your screen. I know people mistakenly put up, that email is fine. I've seen people's personal emails up on Zoom meetings, so, just so you know.
I appreciate it, thank you.
There are other department comments? I know we received one from Chief Martino. He was okay with the.
Right, I forwarded you his email this afternoon. Right, you saw that?
Yeah, but just for the sake of the hearing, every, what did it, he was fine.
I'll, I'll read Chief Martino's. I have it right here. I got it right here. I just got to get to the right section of this email. Bear with me for one second.
We have a fire, fire department comments. They're open.
We did have something from Captain Kringan that I had forwarded to the design team before. Let me find it again.
I got it whenever you're ready.
Okay, Paul, this is from the.
It says, the police, this is from Chief Martino. "The police department has been at the table since day one with respect to the safety and security to Crocker School. We have made suggestions which the team has designed, and we remain confident the best practices have been put in place for our new school. As to the traffic control and mitigation, it's my understanding conversations have been ongoing with Commissioner Erickson and Sergeant Budrow from the PD. I'll defer to them on this matter." So, and we heard from Commissioner Bosn, Commissioner Erickson, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We have anything from Fire?
I thought we had something from, from Captain Kringan. I'm looking, it must have been. This is, speaking of.
We do have a hand raised from Superintendent Jokola.
Oh.
You ready?
Sure.
Whenever you're ready, Superintendent.
Hi, thank you. So just watching the meeting and listening to some of the comments, I felt it's important for me to just state some facts here. As Ed Barche mentioned, we've been in the planning phase for two years. We've had numerous public meetings. The DPW Director, Nick Erickson, and Russ Carlstedt have been members of that committee, and we have talked about, you know, cost and value engineering and what's, what the city can afford. Just so the planning board is aware, the school committee approved $5 million of school choice funding. That's funding that's made for strategic investments, mostly academic, to contribute towards this project, to make sure this project goes forward. The school, the city council recently approved an increase of the budget cost, given the rampant cost inflation on all construction projects recently. So I, I just want it to be clear that the design process, costs of the air conditioning or HVAC systems have, have been public, well-known, and that the city council has twice approved the construction budget and based on cost estimates. So I just want to go on the record and state that. And also, just to clarify, there was a mention of the Gardner project. And the Gardner project, I will share with you that, that was, the Gardner Elementary project has air conditioning only in its offices, library cafeteria, and one or two special education rooms for each grade. The whole school is dehumidifier, though.
Okay. Their building department told me it was 100% AC.
I'm telling you what this, what, I just read you the email I received from the Gardner.
I did, I did, I did call the schools to verify, but I must have got the wrong information. Thank you, Superintendent. I, I certainly, I certainly am aware of the history of this, and I have mentioned this at least, at least two or three times over the last six months since we first heard about it. I do know most of the council did not know about it until their most recent meeting, because I had a few counselors tell me afterwards, when I told them about it, that they learned about it just prior to that, that most recent meeting. So, you know, I can't speak for all of them because I don't know. But I think cooling, I think the, the, the understanding from a lot of people was they just anticipated that, you know, a state-of-the-art school building that was anticipated to last 60 years would have cooling. I know that was the general consensus. Regardless of what the financial decisions have been made, from a planning standpoint, I think our board needs to make it well-known that it's short sighted not to include cooling in this building.
We're not even building to current standards if we're not adding HVAC.
Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's, you know, it's, it, it, we're talking about planning, and we're talking about, you know, building for now, not building for the future. It's just, you know, you're making a 60, 70 million dollar investment, and it's, like I said, it's short sighted to, to exclude that because of the cost, you know, if that's the case. You know, like I said, we have, we have unusual, atypical funding sources now, whether it be ARPA or, you know, funding like that, where we have a, I don't even know how many millions we have in Phase 2 of ARPA funding, which it might already be spent, for all I know. But I can think of few things that would be better spending than future-proofing a building like this.
And there's also the possibility with the Fair Share Amendment passing, that money is supposed to be spent on schools and infrastructure.
It just seems like now we're, we're rushing to get the school built at, at, at what could be, you know, a, a significant issue in hindsight, you know, 20 or 30 years from now.
So I was at least taking a look at whether or not it can be retrofit, and or at least designed to be retrofit. That being said, it is a site plan application in front of us. Utilities, aside from the connections to the building, would be our, pretty much our board recommendation to look at. I still want to open this up to any further public comment.
Yes, we do.
If there's any other body out there that could use the raise their hand feature function?
I don't see any hands, but as Paul had said, if you didn't understand, if you're, if you're on the meeting, whether a panelist or attendee, and you have anything you want to say, feel free to use the raise your hand function, and we'll get to you. There's no one in the physical audience, so it's just the virtual attendees if anyone has anything else. Or Superintendent Jokola, certainly, if you have anything else, you're more than welcome to say anything. I don't, I don't know if I was supposed to, uh, I think those hands go away. We're so used to using the one we used to do, where you could just click off the hands. But anyway, it's fine. There's nothing, no. I, I, no one has their hand raised. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one now.
Two participants.
Matthew Pires, did I, I don't know if I pronounced your name right. I apologize if I didn't.
It's Pires. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, first, I just want to thank everybody. This has been quite an education for me. Little history real quick is that I purchased my house on Whittamore Street in '91, so I'm on 31 years now. I've been living here and raised a family here, and I'm right three houses from Crocker. So I was glad that that was brought up. Some concerns on Whittamore Street. And a little brief history of it is that when I first moved on, there was a speed bump, a very large speed bump towards Crocker School after the last house. And over the course of maybe a decade after I moved in, wear and tear and that speed, it's gone. It was never removed. It just worn down to the, to the natural grade of the street. But that's just one idea I was just thinking of. Signs, we all know signs are a good thing, but a lot of times they go unread. But I think that would be a good start is to have some signage from Crocker School, some bigger signs that say a non-entrance. Bigelow was built for that reason, for Crocker School. That's why there are no houses on it. That is a, you know, school bus, school teacher, and parent road, and which has not always been followed. The school bus is fine, that's not an issue, but it's generally the, the teachers and the parents. And a lot of times, quite personally, it's the parents that are five or 10 minutes late dropping their kids off from school, line up the road at about 60 miles an hour, putting lipstick on or listening to the radio or something. You know, little kids walking around the school, walking to the school all the time. So just from a safety standpoint, I'd like to make sure that Whittamore isn't forgotten about in this whole, this whole project. And one other concern I just wanted to bring up is, going back to what Paul was talking about with the lower parking lot and the lower drop-off and the middle one. I'm starting to see some issues with that also, with maybe some potential bird nesting and bottlenecking happening on the exit there. I'm not sure if I'm just reading or, you know, for what little time I had access to seeing it, that I'm looking at it wrong, I'm not sure. But I know that I heard about, I believe teachers will be directing parking and drop-off. Is that correct?
Ed, do you know who, or John, do you know who typically does that? Or Superintendent Jokola, that's probably a question for you. Who typically does the, who typically leads the drop-off? I assume it's teachers, administration?
I was just, I just wanted to make sure that there was, if there's any safety training that's put in place, if it's, you know, performed by, you know, a credible organization or whatever, because we are talking about children's safety here. And it's, yeah, I just want to make sure that that is being followed. That's what I do for a living, I'm a safety man, so.
Thank you, Ms. Pires.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Is there anyone else who has a question or comment about the?
Yeah.
Project?
Jeremy Roach has his hand raised. It's all yours, whenever you're ready, Jeremy. You just got to hit the mute button.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I just clicked the wrong one by accident. Yeah, so Jeremy Roach, Director of Finance for the schools. And, you know, Crocker has three to four staff members out there for the drop-off time and then dismissal as well. In fact, I think it's actually a little bit more for dismissal. So that practice will continue with the new building in order to process folks through. And typically what they've done, and what I've observed, is they have someone down towards the end, closer to the Whittamore side. They kind of wave six or seven cars through. Those kids depart, you know, and get into the school, and then they clear them out and then wave through others. So again, I think for maximum safety purposes, they'll just continue with that practice.
Jeremy, I got a question for you. It sounds like you kind of know the, the, the process they use there now. And I'm only doing this second and third hand. Someone had mentioned that, I think it was someone at Fire, had mentioned that, or maybe it was the chief, that they, they're not supposed to or don't use Whittamore. I mean, obviously, you can't control everyone, but that is the school's policy, right? Come in and out through Bigelow?
Yeah, I've, I've only seen them come through Bigelow. So if somebody does that, you know, it's not, it's not the process that 99% would do, and they would just be doing that without, with, you know.
That's what I was getting at, is, as long as it's not a pervasive issue. I, I, I've driven up there a few times, you know, obviously, I don't want to go in there while it's drop-off or pickup, but I've been up there a few times when it's off-hours, and it doesn't really seem like too many people are going through there. So that's, I mean, that's certainly my major concern, especially without that gate there, which apparently used to exist, that, that people aren't, you know, using Whittamore as kind of a way to get around the process.
Yeah, that, that's, that's accurate. Again, I could get more information from the principal, Casey Bolak, but as you described, Bigelow is the main entrance and Egress point.
Perfect. And, and to what Mr. Pires had said, Nick, since you're listening, maybe, or actually, I don't see Nick on here anymore, is he? Yes, Nick, since you're listening, no, the other Nick, Nick, Commissioner Erickson, since you're listening, Since you're listening, I presume since it's outside the, the, the limit of their work, maybe if we can just put on our, our growing list of things just to look at that old speed bump on Whittamore. And I know, I know what you're going to say, that we don't like doing speed bumps because of plowing and everything else, but maybe some alternative, if, if it is a problem, maybe even have, at some point, we can look into having the chief go up there, sending someone up there at drop off or pickup to see if people are going through there. But it doesn't sound like it's a pervasive issue, so hopefully it's, hopefully it's not too much of a problem.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at the, the speed bump issue. I, the school department themselves do snow removal. And I think that includes the, the upper end of Whittamore Street if, if I'm not mistaken. So I, you know, I wouldn't be necessarily opposed to it in that location, especially since it's supposed to kind of discourage traffic in general. And I remember way back to when the, the school building committee was formed, when Nick Bossnetta was here, he had us looking into reconfiguring the intersection at Mechanic Street. And that's, that's kind of why I had asked in that, that email that I sent you earlier, sent to, to Mike O'Hara earlier, about what was, what was done to evaluate Bigelow and Whittamore and, and Crocker and that, you know, the, how the, how the traffic enters and exits the site. But I understand, you know, given the, the cost of the building and, and all that, you know, we're, I think it's just completely outside of the scope of this project. So if there's something that comes up, you know, we'll have to handle it as a, a city and not as part of this project.
And, and Mr. Pires, going back to what you had said, if, if it, if it, if it is an issue, especially with people speeding up there, you should contact, I, I, is it Sergeant Budrow still? Or does he have a different?
I think so.
Sergeant Budrow? So Traffic Enforcement at Pittsburgh Police. Give them a call if you, if, you know, if you have a, an issue there and maybe they can send someone up there, you know, a day or two. And sometimes when they send out a couple, you know, give a couple tickets, sometimes that might alleviate the problem, especially if it's speeding.
All right. Is there any further public comment? Regarding this application?
I don't have any other hands raised.
We don't have any further department comments? Mention the, okay. With that. All right, enough information?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
A motion's been made to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. I guess discussion points?
And I know it closed the public hearing, Ed, but just a clarification. Can you give me what the, the hopeful start date and end date is?
Construction?
Uh, John, yeah, I'll defer, you on that one.
We'd hope to start construction in January of 2023.
And how long's the project?
And then approximately a two-year construction duration with substantial completion, wrapping up in the, the winter of 2025. Be followed by about a 10-month closeout period. But that's, that's the overall construction schedule.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's a very large project, complex.
Yeah, I mean, no, no one's going to doubt that it's not a
Oh, very well.
Significant, you know, benefit to the city of Pittsburgh. It's just that minor HVAC issue that I see as kind of a sticking point, but it is what it is. I don't work the finances.
See an update to the, at least trying to update the drop off area with signage on the site plan.
That's Paul, that's Paul, yeah.
Someone else in the background?
I don't know who that is. Yep, yeah, I got it, good.
And any other accommodation that we can make to clarify to ensure that safety of the drop off area? That it's just the single area, not the, and not the upper and a lower auto drop off? And then we had submission of the stormwater clogs to DPW?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I have a list of just, just things. I can go through them, Paul, and you can tell me if you had different. So these are just, most of them are just minor tweaks that, that, that we can make as part of the decision and then you can just tweak the plans to give us a final site plan with all of these things on them. But we had talked about, if you could show some pavement markings for buses and cars, the, the, whatever appropriate signage or pavement markings to discourage internal drop offs in that interior parking area during school drop off and dismissal, just because of the safety issue. Add signing regarding drop offs versus parking area, same thing, goes back to that last one. I think we, you might have said this was already on there, I don't remember. Do not, add do not enter or emergency vehicles only or whatever appropriate signage on to the end of Whittamore Street. Construction vehicles and deliveries should also work outside of drop off and pick off, pickup times. Sidewalk and pavement to be to the city standards to the best that, that they're, you know, budgeted. I'll leave that to you and DPW to coordinate the best you can. Subject to DPW review of the drainage calculations, the water and sewer connections per the DPW comments, as well as any abandonments. And I think that covers it. I did have just a general comment to what Commissioner Erickson had said. If there is any opportunity within the bounds of your additional plan, I, I doubt there is, but if there is, to maximize parking wherever you can to the best amount possible. If you can find, you know, some extra parking areas, just as you, you give us the final site plan with all these reviews, then that would be beneficial.
Yep, and then we just, you know, I guess following that general recommendation, it would be great if the entire building were cooled rather than just the administrative offices. That being said, fallback would be allowing a retrofit in the future for the, for the building. I would think would be a strong recommendation.
100% agree. I don't think we would be doing our job as a planning department if we didn't recommend that, that they find funding for whole building cooling.
All right, is there any further, any more?
That, I'm putting that in the form of a motion.
Okay, that is in form of a motion. All those in favor, say aye, we'll do roll call.
We need a second, we need a second.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. It's been a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, no, those, wait, no, I'm going to take roll call. All those post say a poll and I'm taking a roll call. Sorry. We usually do roll call, particularly when
It's fine.
Owen?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you guys, very good presentation and all, I'm sure, very excited to see this go forward. And thank you Superintendent Jokel and Jeremy Roach and everyone else that was here. Thank you, guys.
And Paul, I assume you'll take out your camera and just snap a shot of those conditions? And I'll have them for the design team, Ed and John. I'll, I'll, rather than waiting for a draft decision, I'll just transcribe Paul's chicken scratching and get those conditions over to you as soon as I can.
That works. If you added anything that I didn't write down?
Yep.
Thank you.
Write it down and give it to Mike, like handwrite it on something, because I'm going to send him a screenshot.
I'm going to have, I'll have to
All right, let me, all right, we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting.
You can write it up quick, if you can write it up, we'll sign it. So when you get it, opportunity in the next day or two, we'll get it done.
Yeah, okay.
All right, let me send you what I have and then you can go off that. Mike, just so you know, you'll see this on the left-hand side, it says speed bump on Whittamore. That's not, that's not a permit condition, a cycling condition.
Okay, okay, I'll remember that.
Anybody need any break?
No, let's keep going.
All right, our next, we have other business and we have a conceptual plan for the new Pittsburgh Public Library at 610 Main Street.
Other business, what? Sorry.
You guys want, for copies, that's another one, but I'm sure it'll be up on
Hello, so I'm here representing TAFE Architects and the library project. I'm Jeff Hoover from TAFE. And I can walk you through an informational presentation that we previously shared with the joint committee earlier this month. If I share my screen, I think I can just do that.
Thank you.
Yep, you should be able to
Great, and I, I believe I have representatives here from both our landscape architects and civil engineering consultants. I don't see them on the attendee list, but I, I have information that they are in attendance. And I guess they can raise their hands if they need to be brought into the conversation. But let me just walk you through, of course, here we see, you know, the basic configuration of the existing building and site just to get oriented and then coming around to a new angle of view with sort of the children's wing of the library, the white roof and kind of in the foreground there. And here is a boundary put around the limits of the site. The combined properties now include the, the original Wallace Building on the right, the children's library and the white roof, and also the parking off of Boulder, which is, you know, now part of the library site or library property altogether. Quick mapping model just to show what exists there now overlaid on top of a, a site survey. And what are the proposed, scope of work here is to remove certain portions of the building, including the Bookmobil Garage, which is part of the Wallace Building's 1965 construction, and remove the entirety of the children's library from 1949, as well as the link between the children's library and, and the Wallace Building, leaving the three floors, two floors above grade, one floor below grade of the Wallace Building to be comprehensively renovated while more or less restoring the exterior. It's characterized, I guess, as an adaptive reuse project under, you know, the historical sort of nomenclatures. Here's, we're of course making a new link to connect to a new children's wing, which includes meeting spaces. So the children's wing is the biggest block with the two skylight monitors on it. The community meeting room, large, about 150 person seating, meeting room is the other block with the two light monitors on the roof. And, and in the smaller box without any light monitors is, 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 you know, ancillary facility, including toilets and also one more community conference room, about 24 people, as I recall. A little bit different angle of view on the same thing. And then transitioning to sort of a not color coded model, but a sort of nicer grayscale rendition of where we are with the design development. And I should say where, where we are with this design development is very near to the end of the phase of design development of, of traditional architectural services, where we have taken this plan and are, are working through our cost estimate and then of course value engineering process to receive some cost reductions to sort of try and force the project back into a, a budget, which in, 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 you know, a, a couple of years ago, a budget from six months ago, that still have been considered relatively current. But the S D estimate from six months ago now seems like it's from another era of time. So we're working vigilantly now to find opportunities with our design as it is to, to realize some cost saving and going through that process over the course of the next several weeks. So, so there is much to be still developed in terms of the design despite being at the end of design development, because we have that value engineering process ongoing, which will result probably in the same change in some exterior building materials. So I think so going with the grayscale representation here is still a fine way to show, you know, basically what the, the project's scope and intents are without getting into the nitty gritty of material selection. Here I'm just coming around the building to look at it from hovering above the intersection of Newton Place and Main Street, the Wallace Building in the foreground and the additions in the background, coming up Main Street to look back on the building. We see parking along that area. I should mention that this is an older representation of the parking schemes. We'll see something different when we get to the engineered drawings, the mapping model. It's from a couple of weeks ago, so it doesn't incorporate recent changes in that regard.
Jeff, before, before we get too far, can I just ask you a question about kind of the overall design? And I know, like you said, we get these things so far down the line that quite honestly, considering we have to do the site plan, we should usually get these before these decisions are made. But that being said, what was the thought process about separating the two buildings? I, I know one of the primary concerns with the chief of police and one of the primary concerns I had when we met at Economic Development a couple of weeks ago is that courtyard. Couldn't you, wouldn't it be cheaper to have one large building versus two separated, three separate, two separate buildings?
It's, I, I'm not, I'm not confident. I don't know exactly what would be cheaper per se, but maintaining the courtyard was a design criteria established before we started in on design, it being a part of the library learning landscape that wanted to be maintained, both from the perspective of the library operations and functions, but also, you know, in terms of it's a historic courtyard and, and the Pittsburgh Historic Commission valued maintaining the courtyard as part of the overall composition. So that, that's sort of, you know, where we began, actually going back as far as 2016 with the design process. So that courtyard has been part of our plan
Okay.
Since the programming phase, you know, before we actually even got involved as architects. So that's, that's, you know, you know, it's almost a legacy item to me now because we've been working on it since 2016.
That certainly makes sense, Jeff. I hadn't thought of it that way.
And I do appreciate you all looking at it with fresh eyes and my eyes, you know, like I said, I've been looking at it since 2016. It has changed a lot over that time from originally being a, I should say, a, a, a three-story addition to now being sort of a one and a half story addition to better, you know, take advantage of ground for real estate, which we could do now that we have the additional, you know, site capacity of having the, the Boulder parking lot property being incorporated into the overall property for the library. So, so I hope that answers your question.
It did, you can continue, sorry, sorry for interrupting.
Interrupt me whenever you want to, just try and careen through this introductory stuff, showing, you know, different, different views of the library from different angles, mostly from the outside here. Again, just the, the, the street level view, experiential view from the corner of Main Street and Newton Place. And we're showing sort of existing conditions and, and new, of course, here from similar angles of view now down at Boulder looking up Newton Place. And that directly across Newton Place from the library, looking at where we're establishing another entry point into the library off of Newton Place. And, and then I'm going to just quickly introduce the, some updated site plan drawing. One of the things when we met a couple of weeks ago, what was brought up was that we had shown diagonal parking off of Newton Place and we were, you know, informed that that wouldn't fly. And so that has been changed to be a couple of parallel parking spots, including a drop off spot to make it convenient to not only put books into the book return, but also to, to do pickup and drop off from people who might be waiting in the, the lobby, which is part of the, the linking element between the two parts of the project. And of course, the, the color coding here showed, oops.
I guess I, I wasn't sure there was, street width would allow any on-street parking on Newton.
Yes, well, we're working into the library property to create that. The street width, if you know, is maintained as the same. And so we're sort of parking on, you know, moving the sidewalk in to the property and, and, and doing it that way. So yeah, the street is, you know, remarkably narrow, I think. Maybe not in the context of overall streets in
Yeah, as, as two ways.
But as, you know, yeah, it's as narrow a street for being two ways. And at some point I have been advocating for conversions to one way, but with all the other conversions that have gone on in Pittsburgh recently, we should probably at this point leave well enough alone. Unless, unless there's some other initiative that you all want to entertain, let us know and we can be accommodating one way or the other. But this needs to work well for us. We think it'll work well for the MBLC, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, who are offering a lot of funding for the project. They were concerned that there be parking capacity near this, the, the new entry for the convenience of, you know, for the convenience of the citizenry of Pittsburgh and its service population beyond to, you know, gain access to the building. So, so that's accommodated there. Of course, there's already on course, there's already on-street parking on Main Street for that entrance. And so it sort of establishes these two entry points with, I think, reasonable vehicular accessibility.
So Jeff, I haven't seen this yet. So I do appreciate it. This is exactly what I know we had talked about in that development review board meeting, is having a drop-off location. But that's going to be marked for pickup and drop-off only, meaning no parking, no extended stay there, correct?
Right. There's, one spot will be, and then there's, I think, a capacity there for three other parking spots for whatever sort of length of stay.
So that first one on the left-hand side is going to be just a parallel parking space, basically, though not parallel?
Yes. I think that what you see here, of course, is an accommodation for a crosswalk location, which interrupts the overall sort of length of the, the parallel parking design there. And I believe the notion there is to maintain an existing crosswalk and pattern of use. If we could move that crosswalk, then, you know, a different design might evolve. But again, we haven't really studied that notion, but I could mention it to you all now for your thoughts and consideration. I don't know that there's a better location. It is mid, sort of mid-block. I don't know how that's, you know, it's either going to be probably where it is and has been, or else it would probably just be eliminated because moving it closer to an intersection is not going to make sense. And I speak to say that from a perspective of somebody who hasn't studied, you know, traffic engineering whatsoever, or, you know, or that kind of thing. But just as a, that's just my offhand perspective, honestly. I defer to anybody that's more expertise.
Did you reach out to ADA?
We have reviewed the ADA distance requirements for getting from your parking to entrance, and the project is in compliance with those requirements. This particular crosswalk, of course, gives library patrons easy access to that public lot, which is, you know, directly across Newton Place, and is really part of the.
Yeah, so I don't think you want to get rid of that or move it.
Okay. So we have it, and that means, you know, the one spot, there's one spot to the left of that. There are two parking spots to the right. And then further to the right is the drop-off right in front of the entrance.
So the reason why I mention that is because I don't, I can't see this plan, and I can't zoom in. We have to make sure this, the appropriate signage on each of those, that if you have one, that it's, you know, it's labeled, whatever the heck you're going to label it. And then the longer stretch of pavement, it's going to be, you know, whatever it is, 15-minute loading, unloading, pickup, drop-off, whatever the appropriate signage is. And I suppose you can talk to DPW about that, I don't know, or the police, whoever determines that. Just make sure that appropriate signage is there.
You also probably write for that, for a handicap drop-off, to make sure that it's deep enough for that.
I, we had talked about that. The chief said that you really can't have handicap drop-off there because of the way handicap vans and parking works, where you can't have them, encourage them to be either in traffic or step out into traffic to use it. So, because we had talked about making a handicap space there, and that's, I think, why that's not a handicap space. Because you can't really have a handicap space that's parallel. We ran into, I guess we ran into the same problems here on Main, they were saying, so.
I guess, that being said, I guess I'm not convinced with the, just the single spot down below. Like, why would, why would we bother to do that? You have the larger drop-off area there, and then putting just another one in there that still may impede traffic up the street.
I think, I think the problem is twofold. And I'll only say this because I had a conversation earlier with someone. And Jeff, you can certainly tell me if this sounds accurate, but from what I heard, it's twofold, that the Mass Board of Library, whatever it's called, yeah, they want as much parking as possible, which is the reason why Newton existed in the first place. And I know that some of the council had mentioned the other day that they were discouraged with the reduction in parking on Boulder Drive. So I think it's a goal to get as much parking as possible.
True. However, there's also city parking right on the other side of Newton Place.
Yep.
So that parking lot also can be used for library use.
I mean, it looks like there's plenty of room to pull in and get out. I don't necessarily see a.
Well, if it's a drop-off thing, I just, I guess from this perspective, I can't see the width that it would, you know.
Right, how big it is. It says 22 by eight right there. He just put it up. 22 by eight is, and that's not including the hatch line, which is the pulling line. So there should be plenty of room there.
Okay.
So can you, now that we're on the.
I recognize that. It does look like an awkward arrangement, right? But you are absolutely correct about what's driving that, which is the MBLC requirement. We will review with them what are, the renewed understanding that we have, and maybe that they will have, that there is a pretty substantial parking lot directly across Newton Place, which while not designated for the library exclusively, is certainly available for use by library patrons. And that may change that perspective, and that may change their attitude towards, you know, these spaces on Newton Place.
Can you give me, can you give me, or can you give the board a count, what exists currently between, well, it's really just Boulder, right? Because there's no parking where the bookmobile is now. So what there is for parking now and what there is proposed on the most recent plan, the one that you have in front of us right now?
I don't have the numbers handy, but certainly we will, you know, when we come back before you, we'll have those calculations. And I should say that there is, you know, parking on the north or the west part of the site, which is at the top of the page, not where the bookmobile garage is, but if you were to continue past that, the garage into, you know, the area that's now going to be occupied by the children's library, there is some staff parking back here. I think there are, I can't remember the number of spots, but at least a dozen spots in the space, you know, from behind the bookmobile garage to behind the library here. So there, but I'll get you, get you the numbers. I think, I think there is roughly the same amount of spots, but there is a net reduction. I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers handy.
Yeah, it'd be interesting, just like number of employee spaces, and where are those designated, designated spaces or being retained?
Do you know how many are on this plan? Do you have that number?
I would have to just count them.
That's fine.
It's been a moving target, I'm afraid, until, you know, the design constantly evolves.
So when you get the final site plan, have those two figures, what exists currently and what exists now? I know I watched the council meeting the other day, whenever it was, or maybe, I don't remember if it was the council meeting or if it was the other meeting we went to. But either way, one of the suggestions was, does that lobby area, the community space, really need to be that big? Can you pick up those Boulder Drive parking spaces there? And that's part of the reason why I mentioned that about the courtyard. My thought was, if you pushed everything up, you could maximize parking on Boulder Drive. I think the, I do agree with the thought process that if you're going to have 100 and, what was it, 150-person community room there, and you're planning on having relatively large-scale community events, there is some parking across Newton Place. And there's some, although not necessarily the city's, technically across Boulder Drive. It would be beneficial to have as many spaces as possible, especially in that Newton Place Boulder Drive lot there. But I, you know, again, I don't know how possible that is to pick up more spaces.
Right. We, as I recall from our previous conversations, we were going to look at maybe reducing landscape border width, et cetera, to try and get more parking into that Boulder lot. We haven't, haven't yet made that exploration. One other thing is that is up for grabs, sort of at this point, is if you notice in the lower left-hand corner of the site plan, there's a rectangle with some dots around it, which represents a generator. We don't know that the cost reduction process will leave a generator in the scope of the project. And so that space, you know, we may, we may get some increased parking in that area if we don't have to have a generator.
Just a thought, since you haven't gone through that value engineering yet about that, given that this is, I believe, one of the primary cooling centers, probably should have a generator.
From our, from the last conversation, someone else had mentioned that because the senior center just up the street really provides that capacity, that it may have been sort of superfluous or surplus capacity to have the library be that as well, which is.
Well, I was just thinking, with a new building that's going to have dedicated community space, that it would turn into the primary cooling center. I don't know. But then again, you might value engineer out cooling, just like Crocker did, so.
Well, no, we aren't going to do that. This building isn't occupiable without cooling, actually.
Now, why is that?
Well, the internally, it's an internally dominated building, which means it generates more heat than it, than it needs during more than, more than half of the year. So it's just, by putting people in it and computers and such, and, you know, insulating the building properly, then it, it makes more heat than it needs most of the time, just by having the lights on and at occupancy. So it's unlikely that we'd be able to come up with a scenario that, that works to cool, especially during the hotter days of the year. We couldn't take advantage of, you know, sort of recooling from outside air and ventilation. Certainly the library has experimented with that this summer, when they in fact had no cooling because the systems were down. And they, you know, had to close the library because it was, you know, over 90 degrees inside. So, yeah, in different, you know, certainly there are great examples in different climates, in Southern California, et cetera, of great library buildings that operate with mechanically assisted ventilation systems that provide for cooling, taking advantage of strategies like using nighttime cooler air to overventilate the building and cool down the building mats, et cetera, and take advantage of that during the day. But this isn't, our climate doesn't actually lend itself to those, those strategies. So we're stuck with having to do some pretty interesting heating, cooling, and ventilating.
Okay.
Okay. And that's actually one thing I had in my notes from, from the meeting the other day, was that I was going to bring up, because, and I'm glad you did, because I wouldn't, I didn't notice it before, and I know the board wouldn't have noticed unless you brought it up. The, the location of that generator is not the most ideal. It's on the corner of Newton Place and Boulder Drive, where you see the dots in the rectangle.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Right where they're.
You can see my cursor. I'm hovering over it.
Exactly. And.
It's not a sign.
Because, because I asked the pointed question, I can, I'll answer it for you. Apparently, it's a unitile dictated location, so.
Combined with the transformer location, which is just across the drive from that, the smaller box, will be the building's electrical transformer. And that's because I think the access point for the electrical utility is from a manhole here in Newton Place. So the farther we get from, from that, of course, the more primary and secondary conduit we're probably pulling to get then, you know, from here to the transformer and back into the building.
So just make sure it's screened for not only aesthetics, but, but for sound. Just make sure that this, if it doesn't, if it survives the final design, just make sure that it's appropriately screened, you know, fencing, and then maybe, you know, some sort of tree plantings, arborvitae's or something around it, just to spruce it up. The fencing would be more for sound ending than anything else. And then if you can provide us with whatever technical specs, what hours and what, how often we would anticipate it to be tested every week, or every other day, or whenever they're going to do it.
Yeah.
So into the, that southern part, portion of the building where the angled parking was removed, so now that you've got a lot more width to work with there, whether or not, you, you know, change the shape of the community room to gain more parking from the parking lot to the west, or, and or, we really encourage landscaping along that side. There's a little bit of landscaping there now, but it's definitely, you've got to retain some landscaping along that side would be still very helpful to soften the entire, you know, hardscape look.
Yeah. The Newton Place side?
Yes, the Newton Place side.
Yeah. Right, we have.
It's like a one-foot strip, and it's, it looks great when it's, when it blooms.
Yeah, we haven't fully taken advantage of the resource that we have there, I think, since we've taken out the angled parking. And I think at this point, it's sort of represented as just paving, a sort of like a very wide sidewalk there. So we have, we have, I think, an opportunity to really sort of soften the experience of coming up Newton Place on the library side of the street by expanding our green space or landscape areas on that side of the building. So I think we'll, we will look at that, and you'll probably see some change the next time we come to speak with you.
Maybe even a small patio, which you have out there for outside seating at some point. I don't know.
Yeah, well, we have, you know, it's such a lovely courtyard. To the earlier point, you can see there's a lot, a lot going on in there with spaces, you know, designated for children and adults, and seating and plantings. And there's the existing sculpture that we're, that we're maintaining. I don't know if you all know, this is, this sort of tower-like, very lightweight sculpture that rises up higher than the building. Those things are there, and the courtyard is, is developed to be a very, you know, attractive and useful space, more so than it is now. Useful for, you know, children's outdoor programming and overflow seating from the library in nice weather. And it is also, you know, another means of approach, coming in from the parking at the top of the page here, through a garden wall with a garden gate, currently emblazoned with the library logo, or in the current designs, emblazoned with the library logo. So there's, there is, you know, the, the, the library outdoor space, the library, that is really for library patrons, is sort of that courtyard space. There's a little bit, of course, of space to the, east of, of the entrance on Newton Place. And this is like, we also would like to make the, you know, a very attractive zone. We have, there's, you know, there's utility to it as well as bicycle parking, and that we have a ramp to get us up to the level of the first floor here. But we do imagine plantings there and trying to work with some nice, hardscape materials to make it be, you know, a pleasant approach to the building from the side.
And you did say that upper courtyard is going to have cameras?
Right. We have, you know, we haven't located security cameras in, you know, in our design yet. We have budgeted for that, and that's where we are with it now. And those things will, will have to survive our value engineering process, yes.
Definitely. At a, yeah, at a minimum in the rear of the building in the courtyard. Yep.
Yes. And we should probably, you know, have a discussion with the party chief about, or the party chief, well, the police chief, about the character and transparency, so to speak, of the wall that we're putting there. There currently is, you know, like a six-foot-high brick wall, and our current designs are more or less replacing that with a new six-foot-high or so brick wall. But if there was the desire to be able to, for a police cruiser to pull in here in the night and be able to sort of shine a light in without getting out, so to speak, and have the wall be secure, still but more transparent at the top with, you know, broad iron railings or something like that, those are, you know, accommodations we can make so that, you know, a person wouldn't be obscured from view if they were to have scale defense, so to speak, and try to, you know, occupy the courtyard for nefarious intent. Or maybe just as a place to sleep, you know.
And I did, we'll get to Commissioner Erickson in a few, I'm sure, but I did know that he had mentioned, and the council had brought up, the RRFIB, the flashing beacon at the Main Street Crossing, and they had mentioned it to you in the prior. Is that going to be able to be on the final design plans of yours?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not certain of.
Well, well, between now and, you know, I think it was told to me, you're anticipating to be in front of us for a site plan in the next couple of months, correct? So between now and then, try and make that decision the best you can. If you can add it, great. If you can't, then we'll.
Well, if, one of the parameters of the can or can't is, does it increase or decrease project costs? We, you know what the answer might be. We would hope to look to some other sorts of funding to provide that, given where we understand the project.
Yeah, I can't speak to its funding, because that's not anything that my board does. But maybe you, you can meet with Commissioner Erickson and discuss that with him.
Absolutely.
Any board members have any comments or questions?
I just have one question, one comment about the location of the generator. Because there's now two-way traffic on Boulder Drive with a main heading west, it might be a good idea to put a couple of bollards. be a good idea to put a couple of bollards in front of that generator, so that someone turning that corner, if they're, if they go off the road, at least they'll hit a bollard and not take out the generator.
If there is a generator, we need to protect it, I think, from all four sides there. Previous, I mean, I brought up this version of the plan because it shows, I think, the, sort of, the site development better than, say, this version, which is really more about drainage, but I go back to this in case there are comments or concerns about site drainage, you think you already have a version of this drawing, and we will make sure you have this update, I think this is updated, current as of today, so it's pretty current, but as I said, there's, there's going to be some changes made to this design to, to bring it in alignment with budget constraints, so it might be best, rather than to confuse your review process with multiple iterations, that we sort of wait till we're through that process, and can issue a set of documents that we think, you know, fairly represents where we're actually going, rather than where we would like to go relative to cost, so I think we'd, so look, look forward to updated preliminary drawings, or else you'll see an update just before we come for formal approval.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, just, just to be clear, do you, do you have a definitive timeframe of when, let me ask this better, when do you need an answer by, meaning regardless of when you can get plans done, when's kind of your drop-dead date for, you have to have everything, site plan included, ready for your final submittals, because I know Crocker was supposed to be done a while ago, and we, we got to the final last minute of they need it right away, so I'm anticipating the same thing to happen here.
Sure, in, in the context of our timeline, you know, we're at the conclusion of the design development phase, and once we get through the, the approvals process at the end of the phase, and get operation, authorization to proceed, we will with construction documents, we anticipate that being early, starting early in December with construction documents, and generally speaking, that would be about six months worth of design time before we would be, you know, ready for issuing documents to bid, so we have, you know, we have some time before we need formal approval, but we, of course, would like to make sure that you're satisfied, you all are satisfied, that we have an approvable design, you know, by, by mid-January or so, so that we don't have to, you know, wrestle with making last-minute changes.
Good, I thank you for the timeframe, and I did have one question, and this doesn't have anything to do with your approval from the planning board, but it's a curiosity thing, and, and I, I heard some of the conversation at the council meeting about the budgeting for this, and it was, this is just a clarification, kind of a curiosity thing, I had heard that there was X amount, millions of dollars, which you can fill in that number, that are going to be fundraised to make up the difference, is that correct?
I, I understand that there's a capital campaign that the library is pursuing, and I don't know exactly what the dollar value of that is, the overall, as I understand it, the overall allocation for the project is set in terms of the upper limit, and that the fundraising campaign, and the funds that would derive, would go to diminish the community, the public community contribution to the project, recognizing that there's the MBLC funds and the ARPA funds that are, that are already part of what makes up the overall, I think it is $40 million total project cost budget.
Yeah, I, I had heard a significant number, my question was going to be, who makes up the difference if they don't meet that fundraising goal, because I was told that was part of the budgeted amount, but you just answered it, that we, it sounds like we, we budgeted the entire amount in our loan service, debt service, and it's just going to come off that, whatever they don't do, so anyway, just a curiosity question.
I think you got it right, I think so.
And I think you just got forwarded, our DPW commissioner, Nick Erickson, sent some.
I have it right here, Nick, if you want to go over this, I'll pull it up now.
Or as a preliminary, you could just, whether or not it was emailed.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you, since we're all here, if you wanted to talk about it in front of everyone, because I have it there. Nick, I don't know if you want to go over this, if you don't, you guys can, whatever, it's up to you.
For the, the sake of, of not keeping everyone here all night, let's, if you could forward that to, to the design team, and I, I can touch base with them outside of this meeting, kind of work through the comments here, I think at some point, it would be good to have a conversation with the water division, and then also the wastewater division, just to kind of align the project with the two water and combined sewer separation projects that we have kind of slated for the next few years.
And, and Jeff, can you, same thing with my question for Crocker for you, can you give me a, a rough start date and a rough end date?
For construction?
Yep.
Unfortunately, our representative from Colliers had to go to another meeting, and he has that information, and I don't have it at the, at my fingertips, but based on a, you know, six-month construction document period, we would wrap up probably early June, two months for bidding, that would mean, for completion of bidding, that would mean issuing a notice of receipt to a contractor in late July, early August, and then I would add 18 months for construction to that, to get to a substantial completion date, so, I mean, it's a little bit vague, still at this point, but I think those are the basic parameters that we work within.
Yeah, and I only ask because, and, and I'm sure if you meet with DPW to go over Nick's questions, some of his related, revolved around the complexity of two projects that are going to happen in Newton Place, and your project becomes more complicated if they pave Newton Place, and we have a moratorium for touching anything in Newton Place, before you get to the point where you need to do utility connections, so you're going to want to meet with them, so that you can coordinate all that stuff before that work happens.
Definitely.
And just a later comment, and I'm sure it'll be part of the, your plans, but the lighting, and whether or not you have any, looking at any landscape lighting, or architectural lighting, highlighting some of the features of the, our unique library, any of that's going to be involved, or thoughts?
Right, we will have a, a site lighting plan available to you shortly, at our next review meeting, be it for formal approval, or another informational meeting, which might be the best way forward, to have another informational meeting once we have made it through the DE process.
If, if you make the changes that we talked about tonight, you're probably best just coming back with the actual site plan, I, I, I mean, while there might, while there might be tweaks, as long as you do it ahead of time, that's going to be the cleanest way to do it than to keep having informal hearings.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, anybody else?
No, I think I'm good.
Great, thank you.
Informal anyways, it's not a public hearing.
I know, it's just informational, it's still exciting.
Yeah, this is Alex, I'm very excited to see this finally happening, the library getting refurbished and redone.
All right, that being said, if there's no other business.
Do you have any questions for us, Jeff, or anyone that you're dealing with?
I don't, if anybody else on the design and engineering team does, this is the time to raise your hand, and if you don't see any hands raised, then I think we can.
Deb Pinkel.
Yep, yep, hold on one second, Deb, it's all yours, just.
Deb is the new director, by the way.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I am the director of the library, I just started here in May 2022, and I just wanted to say thank you so much for hearing our presentation tonight, Jeff's presentation, Jeff, thank you so much, as always.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
So, you know, before this meeting, I forwarded Nick Erickson's comments over to Matt at Colliers, but in the morning, I can forward it to you, and, I'm sorry, I forget the representative of niche engineering as well.
Michelle.
So you have it.
Michelle and Bill, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening.
All right.
That's it, right?
That's it.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And, well, we could talk afterwards, but for next Tuesday's meeting, we're not officially sure whether we will be here, or will need to be over next door, because, because of early voting here, the city clerk kind of declared next week and the following until November 4th, as, you know, okay, can't use the space, but there might be some give and take to that, like put the voting machines over in a secure area, just from working in various cities and towns, election officials get really nervous this time of year, and even also now.
If FATV, if, and I know Dan's listening to this, but if FATV or anyone in City Hall needs us to, prefers us or the council to be in this building, especially for our meeting, that has to happen before Monday, so, we only have one more day, it's just tomorrow.
Well, meetings posted already for, the meeting link, contact Community Development, you know, because we don't know for sure whether it is a meeting link, but I'll keep you guys informed, you know, we may need to be on the third floor in the conference rooms next door.
You're all set with go-to-meeting, without Tom being here? No, I just mean, like, setting it up and everything, that wasn't a.
I will need help from IT, which I will get.
Okay, because once you get the link set up, I can do everything else, I'm pretty confident with the actual administration of it, given what we did during COVID, so.
There's at least a couple of people in, in the office who can, who can set up the meeting link, I'm not one of them.
All right.
All right.
Okay. So we'll know when, Mike, I'm sorry.
We'll know when.
Tuesday, like five minutes before the meeting?
Tuesday, 5:30.
No, no, one before the end of the day tomorrow.
If it changes, it'll be before Monday morning, and if not, just plan on the third floor of City Hall.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sounds good, all right, well, that being said.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Make a motion to adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Hey, thanks, guys.
One later.
Good evening, everybody.